All right. We're ready? Okay. Prior to us coming back to order, I'd like to refer anybody who needs translator services to Ms. Paula Valbuena at the podium.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, President Maestas. Buenas tardes. Habla Paula Valbuena. Si necesita servicios de interpretación al español, por favor llame al 1-805-324-7680 e ingrese el código de acceso 762960391 más la tecla numeral. Este es un número totalmente gratis. Nuevamente, llame el número de teléfono 1-805-324-7680 e ingrese el código de acceso 762960391 más la tecla numeral. También puede acceder a estas instrucciones en nuestro sitio web en MCS4Kids.com, dirigiéndose a la parte inferior de la página en Quick Links y haciendo clic en Board Agenda para ir al agenda de esta noche. Gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Valbuena. Welcome to the Modesto City Schools' regular Board Meeting of July 28, 2025. This meeting is now called to order. In closed session, the Board voted unanimously. We took action and voted unanimously to reject Claims 250527 and Claim 250528. We'll do roll call. Trustee Brown.
I'm present.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Irvin.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Vice President Mejia.
Present.
And President Maestas, I am here. Right. We're all here. Please stand and join me for a moment of silence and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We'll start with the pledge now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, hence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I was saluting to the California flag there for a second. You guys got me. Good, good one. Good one. April Fool's in July there for me. You'd think they'd make some changes and say, hey, President Maestas, by the way, we moved the flag, so that way we can keep it on video. All right. Good evening, everyone. This open session meeting of the Board of Trustees is being livestreamed. At their direction, the Board, the livestream is available on the district's website, and the recordings will be available for viewing the day after the Board meeting. MCS has provided an opportunity for the public to provide comments, and it is outlined on the agenda. The public has been given an opportunity to call in and leave a voicemail, send us a comment via email, or appear in person before the Board. Any public comments received via email or voicemail following the posting of the Board Agenda and prior to noon the day of the Board Meeting will not be read aloud, but have been transcribed and printed with copies provided to each Board Member. Prior to the start of this meeting, they will be available to the public. The voice and email public comments will be attached to future Board Meeting minutes for approval. This practice will continue until further notice. For members of the public that are interested in commenting in the future, we welcome your comments. If you wish to address the Board during the period for public comment on a subject that is not on the agenda, you must complete a public presentation request card and submit it to the Board President prior to the period for public comment. If you need assistance from our translator, please indicate so on the request card. Every person who wishes to address the Board, please fill out a card. You will find the cards in the lobby, and you can hand your comment card to Ms. Chambers, who's in the back. She's waving. I also want to remind you that if you wish to make a complaint against a specific district employee, you should follow the district's personnel complaint procedure. Copies of that procedure are available in the lobby, as are agenda copies which outline the procedure we will observe during the period for public comment. The right to address the Board does not exempt any speaker from any potential liability of defamation. If you plan to speak on a topic, please fill out a card now. As no cards will be accepted after the period for public comment has begun. Maximum time for any one speaker is three minutes. For a total of 30 minutes, for those of you requesting translating services, an additional minute will be added to your comment time. Okay. We're going to go ahead and get started with our superintendent's welcome. So I'll turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Betrago.
There we go. All right. Thank you so much, President Maestas. Good evening, everyone. I've got a bit of an update. I'm going to be going over a number of different things that I have had the pleasure of experiencing since I came onboard on July 1st. I want to just say thank you to everyone who has been so supportive since I came onboard. This is a huge honor to be the new superintendent of Modesto City Schools, as I am a product of Modesto City Schools. I attended Beard Elementary, Roosevelt Junior High School, and Modesto High School. So I am a proud Modesto City Schools' product and now superintendent, and feel really fortunate to be here. So I do have just an update on a number of different things that I've experienced in the last couple of weeks. And just want to note that even though school has not resumed, we have been very busy nonetheless. I had the opportunity to visit Nutrition Services, Summer Feed Program, three different locations, Wesson Ranch Park, Davis Park, and Everett Park. It was wonderful to see students participating in that and coming out and playing at the park with their families and really engaging with our Nutrition Services staff, who did, quite frankly, a wonderful job with our families and so grateful that, as a district, we are able to provide that service over the summer. I also want to note that our FFA students did an outstanding job representing themselves, their respective schools, and our district at the county fair. I got to see their animals, and, you know, they've raised their animals since spring. They've been taking care of them like they were their babies and really enjoyed learning terms and concepts related to various ag industries. Students were absolute experts. And, you know, in addition to telling me about their animals, they gave us a great tour and demonstrated a wealth of knowledge and experience that really, for me, reinforced how critical our CTE programs are, because they are learning a lot, and they're demonstrating that learning. I've also attended Admin Week and New Admin PD. It was a delight to see over 200 leaders engaging in meaningful reflection and purposeful planning. So kudos to them. I think the days that we've spent together have really represented a great kickoff for the year for our staff. I also just want to say thank you to all of our community partners that have taken the time to meet with me and orient me and really allow me to become acquainted with all the different supports and services that they offer to Modesto City Schools. And then the last thing that I would just say is that had an opportunity on Friday to attend the Jubilee Family Fun Night. Over 2,000 families attended, and that was just a tremendous opportunity to really see how engaged our families can be and how much they ultimately need us, right? Of course, these are just a few highlights. I recognize that a myriad of notable activities have been going on throughout the summer, and they too deserve recognition. But we would be here all night, I think, if I went through all of them. And then finally, as our first and last regular Board Meeting before the first day of school, I take this opportunity to wish our students and our staff a safe, joyful, and very productive first day of the '25-'26 school year. So that's it for tonight. I'll turn it over to President Maestas.
All right. Thank you. And I know we're going to hear more later on in one of our Board Agenda items here. So we're going to go on to our Board Reports. Do we have any Board Members who'd like to share a report? All right. We'll start with Trustee Marks.
Thank you so much. It was great to hear all the information of what's been going on this whole summer and where everybody's been active, very active. Even though school is not in session, there's still a lot, although we had summer school, and I know it ended a couple of weeks ago. So I wanted to give, I only have two items to report on. I wanted to say that I went to the Clergy Council meeting, and that was really a good meeting in the middle of summer. We had a fairly good turnout. And it was, some of the items that were shared were very interesting. One was that they're trying to crack down on illegal fireworks because they're concerned about harming people's property. And because they have that flyover airplane now, they're able to identify where the fireworks are happening. So there were less fires this year, it happened to be, than have been in the past. So that was really helpful to know that it's actually helping. And then also, they had, they're using those really unique CHP cars that are low-profile, we'll call them. And they let us know that they're, you've seen them probably. There's a, I want to call it like a white one that has just the emblem on the side, and another one that's kind of a darker color. But they go drive down the freeways, and cars don't see them. And somebody was going 120. And so their goal is to help prevent accidents and for people's safety. So we're happy that there's a way to just, because those of us who've been on the freeway and have somebody, in fact, when I was driving here tonight, there was a, the truck in front of me was weaving all over the place on the freeway, going almost over to the median and hitting the wall, and then swerving back. And it's windy through on 99. And I thought, you know, and he's in the fast lane. And then I wanted to get around him, and so I had to move over. Anyway, turns out I was a kid. He was on his phone. He was just looking at his phone. And so it's a scary thing, but I'm glad there's, our Highway Patrol is working at making it safer for all of us. And then lastly, the city of Modesto is redoing their general plan. They haven't done it since 1995. And so they're going to, they're working on, also, working on the unincorporated areas, which there's a lot around us right now, and putting sidewalks in and sewer and lights. And so that was, they're putting it on their agenda. So that will probably have a lot of people that comment on that. So that was discussed at the meeting. And then lastly, I attended the event on Friday with Trustee Mejia and Trustee Lopez and Dr. Betrago, and it was an amazing event. I've seen it grow over the years with all the booths and just so many from the community that participate, give away gifts to the kids, and have all these items for them to receive that night, including baskets and all that. So it's been a really interesting summer.
Thank you. Trustee, actually Vice President Mejia.
Yeah. I only have the Jubilee I was able to attend. I've been going for many years, and it's great to see, you know, just how much it has grown with all the agencies that come. And we were able to meet a lot of potential partners and partners already doing stuff with Modesto City Schools. So it was good to just reconnect and got to see lots of families from, almost, a lot of our schools. The majority are from our schools in South and West. They come from a lot of places, but a lot of community that can walk there, that can just, you know, proximity, it's important how close this event is to the community. So I think it's really powerful. I know we have other ones coming up, and I'm pretty excited to participate in those as well. So that's it for me.
Well, thank you. Trustee Irvin.
Yes. For the first time in some years, I missed the Jubilee. And, but as always, I know it was a successful event for our community. One of the things, I went to, I was actually in Detroit on that day it happened. And so I was in Detroit with nine of our students in Modesto City Schools on a youth leadership conference and a STEM conference, in which during the STEM conference, they talked about CTE and the impact on sports and everyday life. And we don't usually think about CTE in everyday life, but people get hurt on the jobs and, you know, experience concussions and things like that. But it was very interesting to see the, to learn about the impact of concussions on the brain. And the students actually, after they got to learn about the brain, actually got to dissect sheep's brain. And it was good, because, what, five of the nine students are not, you know, they're not sophomores yet, you know, to be able to have biology or anything like that. So this was their first time being, they were freshmen this year. It was the first time they got to experience dissection. And so it was good to know that when they get that class, they'll be well indoctrinated on the dissecting of brain and frog or whatever they decided to dissect. So it was good. We got a chance to see some of the city, took a picture in front of the Joe Louis statue that they have there. And also, they got to see Canada, which is right across the Lake Michigan there. And so, yeah, we had a really good time. We were there from, you know, got back on Sunday, and we went on Wednesday. We left on Wednesday. So it was very good to be able to experience that with our students. And so, and those are students that are being mentored by me and several other mentors in our, in our community, part of Project Uplift. And July 4th Parade also. Went to the July 4th Parade. I know Trustee Marks was there, and Trustee Brown, and, yes. Oh, he wasn't there? Oh, okay. Maybe, very spiritually, he was there. But it was good to see everyone there. Trustee Daly, oh, we all there. I think you were the only one, right? Oh, you weren't there too. I didn't catch your spirit there. But it was good. Hey, and it wasn't as hot as it has been in the past. So it was very good to see all the people out during the 4th of July Parade. And that was it for me.
Thank you. Trustee Lopez.
Well, hello, everyone. Happy summertime. So I'll be brief, because people mentioned we were part of the 4th of July Parade. Last week, I attended the Family Fun Nights at the Jubilee Center in South Modesto, as mentioned before. A work that, an event that has been, that has been around for a long time, but each year it's been growing in its impact. I know what we want to think, oh, we, they work in collaboration with Modesto City Schools, but all the credit to their team, to their parishioners, to the pastor, to Jorge Perez, which works with both entities. And so just making that a success and really helping foster community and a community that really needs it. And so thank you for all that work. I will be talking about it more in length next time, next Board Meeting, but I was able to attend the Naleo Conference, the National Association of Latino Elected Officials, which was a great learning for myself. And so I would have a more in-depth report, in-depth report, but to share out what were my learnings in our next meeting. So that's my report.
Excellent. Thank you. Trustee Brown.
So before I report, I just want to reach out to the community and express gratitude for the generosity that we're seeing throughout the entire community as we have backpack events and school supply events. We're seeing great numbers of people who need the supplies that we're seeing come forward from the community. Shout out to our classified folks, 007 people out there who are ready to stuff the bus this week and invite the community to come and support that event for school supplies for our kids and help supplement things that happen in our classrooms. I had the opportunity to be invited to an event this past week, and I had to bring my sticker from my shirt to help me remember the name. A new news agency in town that was introduced to us, the Modesto Focus. And this is not an agency that's going to be in competition with the Modesto B, but a supplemental news agency that will be very different than what we've seen in the past. It's not a printed product, and it's not an agency that will report our current events. They will be more issue-specific, looking at good things that are happening in the community, trends that are happening. They will do some investigative reporting on large issues. But they're not going to be reporting on traffic incidents or thefts or burglaries or fires that happen in town. So it was very interesting to see who's who in the news industry at this event. And had some question and answers, and I did, was one of the first to speak up with a question to find out how involved this agency would be with the student voice. Because as we are seeing, newspaper and news businesses are fading, and they're generational. And we have the older folks who are looking towards those products for news and not necessarily our youngsters. And I said, how are we going to see you guys involve the student voice? And so they have asked me to reach out to our student representatives and make sure that they're in connection with the folks that will be leading the Modesto Focus, two people, veteran reporters from the Modesto B, Garth Stapley and Marika Roland, are kind of heading up the agency here in Modesto. And I will be working with Sharakina to make sure that our student reps get the introduction to the two of them and basically become our connection to the news agencies here in town. So it was very good. We probably won't see them here reporting on our Board Meetings, but they would be happy to partner with us with articles about great things that are happening in Modesto in education. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Daly.
I have a few things, some will repeat, but I'll kind of go through them. Trustee Marks forgot to mention, we were able to attend the 13th Annual Modesto Citywide Prayer Breakfast the end of May, which was between the two Board Meetings. That was really exciting with a lot of people present there. And then obviously, the 4th of July Parade. One of the things that wasn't said, as we did our first one-on-one with Dr. Betrago, and it was really a hopeful meeting, getting to know everything that's happening, everything that wants to happen, getting to know each other, things along that line. So I really enjoyed that one-on-one meeting. On Saturday, I got to blend into the background at Modesto Gospel Mission, handing out backpacks and shoes, doing haircuts. Amazon had several pallets that they sent out for families. And approximately, there were several Modesto City School families that were there as well. So approximately 800 shoes were passed out, primarily from Big Valley Grace Church. And then approximately 1,000 total backpacks, with a good majority of those backpacks coming from Celebration Center Church. So that was a real blessing to see that. And some families that had been at other events that couldn't get backpacks ended up getting backpacks. They had some amazing shoes. It was really great. And then all the supplies in there. And then on Sunday night, got to experience for the first time a citywide worship night that is located at 1010 10th Street. And that was just amazing. I'm going to guess anywhere between 500 to 700, 800 people that were there, representing approximately 13 different churches in the area. And Dr. Betrago attended, and they were, the leadership was absolutely excited. She actually left before some of them, I was able to share that information with some of them. And they would, wanted to invite you back and wanted to be able to introduce you or get an introduction. The next one is September 28th, but they also wanted to extend an invite to all the Board Members. So September 28th at 6:30 is the next one, and they would love to have you in attendance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't have too much to report. Been busy with summer school as well, not here, not Modesto City, obviously, but another summer school, and then math PDs over the summer for math teachers and conferences, music camps. There's just been a ton of stuff going on over the last month. So I want to extend a big thank you to all the staff that have been keeping things going over the summer, especially summer school staff, as well as Nutrition Services that have been keeping our community fed. All the 12-month staff that have been keeping the lights going, the things moving, our campuses going, and then all the admin that have been coming back, starting to get their work together for the school year to start, and all of the teachers that are starting, you know, marching band camps and football, weight trainings, and getting prepared for classes that are going to start in a couple of weeks. And just all of the work that goes into, all the instructional coaches that are getting the professional development all ready. All of those things that are necessary for our schools to start and for day one to be the best day one for our kids as they come into our schools, our new students, our tiniest students in our TKs and pre-Ks, and all the way to our seniors and our adult ed students. So thank you for all of those that are working hard to keep our schools running and getting ready for this new school year. I'm pretty excited about the school year. So we'll move on with the rest of our agenda. First, we are going to go to our approval of our consent agenda. And I've been asked to move Item D6 out of consent and put it into Item B4A. D6, D as in dog. And that is an approval for SELPA services from the Center for Human, the Center for Human Services. We have a report on that tonight, and so it just makes sense to have the approval right after the report to see how it goes. So we're going to, if, well, first I got to get a motion to approve that item being moved out and put into Item B4A. Okay. So I hear a motion by Trustee Brown, second by Vice President Mejia. All those in favor to approve the consent agenda with Item D6 being moved to Item B4A. Stay by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. That passes unanimously. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the order of discussion action items now that we have a B4A? Moved by Vice President Mejia, second by Trustee Marks. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. This takes us to our period for public presentations on topics not on the agenda. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting and showing enthusiasm. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting and showing interest in our schools. I do not have any cards, so we will move on to our next portion. Do we have an MTA representative report tonight? I see none. All right, we'll move on to our CSC report. Monique Fernandez, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Monique Fernandez. I am the first vice president for CSCA in Modesto Chapter 007. For starters, I would just like to say welcome back for our classified employees that are coming back. A majority of our 11-month employees came back last Friday and then we have our 10-month employees returning to school soon too. And then 12-month employees, they've been working tirelessly throughout the summer, like myself, and we're all excited for school to start back up and to serve our students again. CSCA has had an annual conference this summer that our delegates have just returned from. This year, we were able to send 13 delegates. It was the 99th Annual Conference for CSCA and it was extraordinary, is what I've been told. They get to experience educational breakout days there and also get to participate in state business. It's really interesting to hear the feedback from our employees because for many of them, this is their first conference that they've ever attended. There's two major conferences that CSCA holds every single year, which is our annual CSCA Conference and then our Para-Educator Conference. Those are two major conferences that our classified employees get the opportunities to go and attend and experience and we're really excited for our delegates to come back and share out their reports with us. But other than that, we've just been staying busy, working hard and with summer school as well. Our summer school employees are usually working just normally during the school year and then they get to have the opportunity to work throughout the summer as well and that keeps them busy, yes. There's been an expansion with summer school. Previously, it was just summer school at certain hubs, like school site hubs, and it's been expanded to a larger amount of school sites, if not all. I'm not 100% sure because I just work at district office, but that meant an increase to our staffing needs. So a lot of our paraprofessionals had the opportunity to work again with the students here at Modesto City Schools. And then something that we're looking forward to as a chapter, we're really looking forward to being more present with Modesto City Schools events and community events. We were just recently invited to one of the backpack giveaways coming up next week. Thank you, Mark. We're really hoping to have our CSCA leadership out there and, you know, just be present so people can get to know us and see what we do and see how we support our members. And that's it for our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Okay, we'll move on to B3, our Superintendent's 100-Day Plan Overview. I'll turn over to Superintendent Dr. Betrago.
All right, thank you, Board President Meistis. I'm going to take everyone through this presentation. In addition to the presentation that you will see on the screen, there is also a physical 100-day plan that you should have in front of you and I believe that the audience here with us also has access to that plan. Okay? All right, so as the new superintendent for Modesto City Schools, I take this opportunity to share my 100-day plan. The purpose of the plan is to articulate the commitments that guide our work moving forward, also just indicate that we are planning with purpose and really taking on the first 100 days in a very intentional way. Similarly, you will see that we will go over my core leadership values and then key tasks that will really be the focus in my first few months, okay? So you'll see that our collective why is really what is going to guide the 100 days or my 100 days in Modesto City Schools. And this is our vision, continues to be the same, and it is that every student graduates with the skills, knowledge and character traits essential to thrive and contribute to society. So even though I am new to Modesto City Schools, we continue to have the same focus and we will continue to work with great energy and passion towards this specific vision. So in terms of commitments that guide our work, I'm coming in with the belief that we have to demonstrate care for, belief in and commitment to every young person every single day. And so at Modesto City Schools, every student matters, every moment counts. That will continue to be our motto as we move forward. Also, I want to note that we will continue to invest in people. That is a critical commitment that I want to just state publicly because that is, you know, the work that we do. If we are going to serve students, we have to not only invest in them, but we will have to invest in the adults that care for them and educate them. We also commit to collective efficacy and continuous growth, something that I have mentioned over the past several weeks since my time on board, is that we cannot adequately serve our community if we are only acting as individuals. We really have to act as a group, as a community, then caring for the greater community and then continuing to focus on progress. To that end, we also need to make sure that we are aligning our goals and have that strategic plan and that all the goals are working towards those greater strategic goals. So all of our staff members will have specific individual goals that will align with the greater goals. And of course, we will continue to partner with students, families and the community. So planning with purpose, the first 100 days, you know, as I was drafting this plan, I wanted to really focus on an effective, efficient and orderly transition of leadership. I know that it can be very difficult when you have a leadership change and it can be disruptive to the system. And so in taking into account what my first 100 days will be, this is really about making sure that we're moving together and not disrupting the progress that Modesto City Schools has already made. So we're building on it versus disrupting what, everything that has been accomplished. We will continue also to focus on increased achievement for all students. So again, continuity is critical and then also focusing on the relationship that I have with the Board of Education and the Executive Cabinet, specifically building trusting and productive collaborative relationships so that we can, again, serve students in a meaningful way. The last two, I just want to highlight because this is really kind of the focus for the next slides. I will intentionally use the next 100 days to listen broadly and deeply to all educational partners with the intent of understanding the system and understanding the context prior to, you know, making any decisions and working collaboratively to really decide what we need to work on moving forward. And then also just gaining comprehensive understanding of all the key aspects of Modesto City Schools. Again, prior to saying that we need to shift direction, really understanding what we've done, where, you know, how far we've come and where we're going. Also, critical to the work and what I am most passionate about is ensuring that all voices are heard and engaged. So this isn't just about making sure that I'm meeting with staff members or students or families, but rather really taking into account all voices, understanding their needs and, you know, hearing their experiences in Modesto City Schools thus far. Also identifying, excuse me, and executing activities that ensure continuous improvement and community trust and then again collaborating closely with employee groups and labor partners. So continuing those structures that are in place with CSCA and MTA and our managers. So these next steps for me are really informed by my core leadership values, which are intentionality, transparency, community and excellence. When I say intentionality, this really refers to making decisions that are informed, understanding what the context is, understanding what our data is and understanding what the needs are. Transparency is just making sure that we're continuing to communicate openly and ensuring that, quite frankly, I come off as very authentic and genuine and that way we're building trust. The last two, our community, this specifically refers to really working for the community with the community. So we are engaging purposefully with those that we serve and then always striving for excellence, which is different than perfection, always striving to be better. In terms of key tasks, so I've broken up the next 100 days into three critical areas, learn, communicate and build. In terms of learning, this is about looking, listening, studying and making meaning and specifically creating opportunities to listen to the community and listening to understand, right? To understand lived experiences, to understand how members of our community have experienced Modesto City Schools so that we can strive to continuously be better. Visit all schools and interact with departments, so that has already started. I've been meeting with different divisions, different people within those divisions. And then the goal is to have at least one visit to every school site the first month of school so that I'm connecting not only with principals, but their leadership teams and seeing what's going on in classrooms. And then finally, you'll see just collecting, reviewing and analyzing data that really tells the story of Modesto City Schools and that is already in progress. You know, one of the things that I really appreciate about what Modesto City Schools has accomplished thus far is that there's been strategic use of surveys to understand what people think and feel about, again, how they're experiencing our school system. And so I've had access to the survey results and really just spent time looking at them and assessing the needs that we have. Part of learning is also attending to relationships and specifically understanding the different perspectives and interests that exist in our community. Also identifying critical staff to facilitate the smooth transition. And I will say that so far, I've been able to interact and engage with great leaders so far, right? And understand what's going on at school sites, what the priorities are for different departments. And so I feel like that's been a huge success thus far, is identifying people who really have the information that's needed to move forward. And again, creating trust, ensuring productive and collaborative relationships. And you'll see here, this is a picture of our 25, 26 student reps. And, you know, I think that as we talk about decisions that are well-informed, taking into account what students believe and taking into account student voice is going to be critical to making decisions moving forward. And then that leads me to communicating, in the past few weeks, and this will continue, it's been really important for me to understand the structures that are in place that allow for us as a district to communicate with different partners, right? Whether it's within the district or outside of the district. But understanding what those structures look like and making sure that we are continuing those structures and following that regular meeting cadence. And then, of course, part of that is ensuring that we have regular feedback loops. And part of this is engaging. So you will find that at the beginning of our board meetings, I will provide, I will continue to provide the superintendent update so you know kind of what's going on in terms of engaging with all of our partners and then reporting our findings or reporting those findings out to the broader community. And at the end of the 100 days, the goal is to have a comprehensive plan to present to you with all of the learnings from all the conversations that we've had, all the data that we've looked at and all the different opportunities for engagement with the community, which will put us at about December 2025. And that will be, again, a formal report that we will present to you. And that report will have strengths and areas of potential growth that will then inform priorities or strategic goals and decisions moving forward. The last thing that I'll say is, you'll see that most of this plan is really reflective of an effort to listen to the community, understand the community and study the needs, right? And I wanted to finish with this quote from Kofi Annan because I think that it's really reflective of what learning is, right? When we learn, we empower ourselves, we empower others when there's active focus on learning and that information is truly liberating and it allows for all of us to make progress. So that is ultimately what I hope to do at the conclusion of the 100 days, is be able to present information to you so that we can make informed decisions. Last thing that I'll say is, I want to thank everyone who has assisted with the development of this 100-day plan, specifically Executive Cabinet. They have provided meaningful feedback, have really provided great guidance in my first month or so. And also a special thanks to the communications team, both with just, you know, following me around, making sure that they capture the moments that we want to capture, developing the booklet that you have in front of you. And really, they just have been tremendous to work with, so I just want to thank them. And then finally, I also want to thank the community that has really made this plan possible because you'll see the photos included in that booklet would not be possible without those who have been open to receiving me and welcoming me to Modesto City Schools. And that concludes my presentation. Back to you, President Meistis.
Thank you so much, Dr. Betrago. Yeah, I saw some of these pictures in, I think it was on social media and I was like, man, this like just happened. Communications, you printed this out with like days. That's pretty impressive. Thank you for that report and we look forward to the 100-day plan. Are there any comments from the public on this agenda item? All right, do we have any questions or comments from the board? Trustee Irvin.
Great 100-day plan. After going over it, I mean, really insightful and granted, you know, you have some personal insight as well that, you know, you brought to the forefront because of your history and background here. So I think that has gone into helping you really gain a much broader, better understanding of the needs of our community, you know? It seems like you've stepped out into the community and I've heard nothing but great things in the community about people who have met you, people who have sat down and felt that you were so genuine in your, in your, in your passion for Modesto City Schools. And so I just wanted to commend you on that and thank you for taking that time to get to know us again as you pursue your leadership here. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Irvin. I said, thank you. I'm going to have him go again. All right, yeah, thank you for that report. I look forward to, well, there's going to be data at the end, so I'm always looking forward to data at the end of the 100 days. So I look forward to listening, hearing what the community and all the information that you get from reaching out for those 100 and all the information that you get from reaching out for those 100 days. All right, no other questions? We'll move on to our next report. Report and ratification of a 2025-26 services agreement with the Center for Human Services. Mr. Lameli.
All right. Good evening, Board President Maestas, Trustees, Superintendent Patrago, Cabinet and guests. My name is Tony Lameli, Senior Director of Student Support Services. I will be presenting on the report and ratification of the 25-26 services agreement with Center for Human Services. The purpose of my presentation this evening is to highlight our longstanding relationship with Center for Human Services and social and emotional supports provided for our schools and our students. My presentation will include a review of services provided and data correlated to these services. I will also highlight the challenges and successes, including next steps in our work. And lastly, at the end of my presentation, I will request ratification and approval of the service agreement with the Center for Human Services for the 25-26 school year. This is a ratification due to mental health supports taking place during the month of July that is specific to our integrated mental health clinicians. Again, like Dr. Patrago had mentioned, we always center on our why. And through this, through this ratification, we are looking to not only ensure students have the skills, knowledge, and character traits, but they, we remove barriers so they can thrive and contribute to society. This report and ratification of service agreement is in direct alignment with our district goal 1.4, which is to develop tiered systems of supports that support all of our students. A little history on our relationship with the Center for Human Services. Center for Human Services is a nonprofit community counseling agency. Modesto City Schools and the Center have formed a collaboration that has continued to expand more than 30 years. The Center's primary role with MCS is to provide much-needed social and emotional support for our students. They also support in other areas like providing professional development for our staff and trainings and professional development for our parents. Our work with the Center utilizes three different provider types: our student assistance specialists, which we like to call our SASs, our FSSs, our family support specialists, which also go by FSSs, and our integrated mental health clinicians, our behavioral clinicians. This slide shows the number of days each provider type is on campus. The sites can also supplement with extra days with their site funds. As noted here, you can notice that student assistance specialists are five days at every one of our elementary, junior high, and high schools, including alternative sites. Our largest number of CHS providers are our student assistance specialists, or SASs. These support staff are assigned to support all 34 sites and our alternative education programs housed on the Pearson campus. The primary role of the SAS is to provide tier-one and tier-two support to students with social and/or emotional needs. Students are served either in a set number of individual sessions or in a group setting. The SAS, or student assistance specialist, can also provide parent trainings and presentations as determined by the site leadership teams. In addition, we continue to support our intervention centers with SAS support. The Intervention Center SAS is a primary person involved in de-escalation and/or social-emotional skill-building with student-need intervention center support. In looking at the data for this last year, student assistance specialists served over 3,300 students, with an increase of over 60 students and over 350 individual sessions from prior year to support students' individual-specific needs, a long way, very close to the numbers in the previous year of group sessions, at around 500 group sessions. When students were in crisis, student assistance specialist providers supported with 387 crisis intakes, which shows a notable decrease from past two years. When needed, crisis intakes included follow-up actions and referrals for higher levels in the form of a risk assessment, if applicable. Again, I am overall pleased with the support provided and the growth in students serving students in individual sessions to support their tier-one, tier-two needs, as well as maintaining group sessions and the notable decrease in crisis intakes this past year. Beginning in the 2019-2020 year, the district expanded the contract with Center to include family support specialists who focus on chronic absenteeism. Under the direction of the site administrative team, the family support specialists provide outreach and work directly with family in addressing chronic absenteeism or extreme behaviors. The work of the family support specialists centers around family skill-building and ongoing parent education and training. The family support specialists provide a great layer of support specifically for our families. Last year, family support specialists served over 490 families experiencing challenges in getting their students re-engaged in attending school. Additionally, family specialists logged over 5,900 contacts with families that they were assigned to, which showed increases in both categories. Modesto City Schools is also fortunate to contract with Center for Human Services for our Integrated Mental Health Clinician Program, which is now places clinicians at all school sites. The primary focus of our clinicians is direct services to students and kids, and the kids they serve by providing individual and group counseling services to identify tier-two and tier-three needs for students in need. Clinicians now work at all PK-12 school sites and can support any student on an MCS campus, regardless of its insurance or level of severity. We are fortunate that through the billing process to expand services to all sites, and for the first time this past year, have clinicians at all of our high schools. In the first year in the implementation of the Integrated Mental Health Clinician Program, which focused directly on direct services, clinicians engaged in these tier-two, tier-three services with an increase of over 10,000 hours of individual and group sessions across all our schools. Again, it's important to note that clinicians were available at all PK-12 school sites this past year, including our high schools, for the first time. Again, very pleased with the individual and group increases to support our students. When looking at the demographic distribution of students served by the Center for Human Services, you can see a breakdown closely remembers that of our district enrollment. Additional data that helps gauge effectiveness of services are in the forms of staff, family, and student satisfaction surveys. This qualified data provides meaningful information as it takes place at the conclusion of services, so we really know how both the family, the students, and the staff feel about the services provided. The next four slides list data collected along with survey comments shared by those supported. We are incredibly pleased with the high percentage of staff who see their service as a benefit to our students, as noted in the slide. Satisfaction surveys from families show a similar feeling when asked about their experiences with CHS providers. Once again, incredibly pleased to see extremely high percentages of families that see the benefits of services being provided to the students. And finally, most importantly, is how our students are responding. Satisfaction surveys from students show a similar feeling when asked about their experiences with CHS provider, as noted on this slide. In addition, I would like to share a direct comment shared with us by staff, families, and students regarding the services provided. "From the times I need help, you were there to support me. I could not have graduated without your support. I am so impressed with my child's improvement in all areas." Exceptional support for our students in times of crisis and where students just need a listening ear. Students feel that they are being heard and getting the attention they need. While we are pleased with the data provided and overwhelming positive feedback, we will continue to dive deeper to ensure that all students feel they benefit from the services being provided with our partners. The successes in our collaborative partner with CHS are great. However, I truly appreciate our continuous collaboration with our CHS leadership and their support of our MCS staff, the professional development that it was, that we witnessed over the last month already, this year, and in the past years, in support of our MCS staff at all our sites and our admin team, and the tiered supports that are available for our MCS students. In addition, our continuous opportunities to braid and leverage billable opportunities to expand services without impacting costs. Again, our greatest challenge is attrition for our Center for Human Services, which is a shift. In the past, we were worried about staffing. Now, as we are able to fully staff our sites with student assistance specialists and family support specialists, which are bachelor-level positions, who are typically seeking masters in a related field and seek promotional positions. In essence, they become our school psychologists and our clinicians of the future. So the next challenge is as we are staffing our sites with student assistance specialists, family support specialists, they continue to grow, which we want, and they grow into future positions, which are master-level positions. So as we have done a great job, and Center for Human Services has done a great job of staffing our sites, it's very notable that many of these, 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 these adults are looking to grow and move on in their positions. Our next step is to seek ratification of the service agreement with Center for Human Services. Once approved, we have been very fortunate to expand clinician services as of coming years solely due to the work being done with the Center for Human Services around wellness coach implementation and leveraging the California Youth Behavior Health Initiative, which will help us to continue to sustain and expand social-emotional services at our school sites through the billing process. In addition, we'll continue, we will continue to promote available services and continue to track data to determine strengths and areas for growth. At this point, I would like to turn the presentation back over to Board President Maestas for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Lameli, on that report. Are there any comments from the public on this agenda item? All right, see, teacher wait time, teacher wait time works.
Sorry, I was not planning on talking about this, but I do, good evening. I do just want to mention that I am a newer teacher. I've been teaching MCS for, this is gonna be my fourth year. And without the help of the SAS, I probably would have quit teaching. Like, there has been several days with the same student, with different students, and having that support, even sometimes it's just me going in there and being like, "I need a hug," you know what I mean? Like, 'cause they have been so supportive and helpful with all of our students, and like I said, staff as well.
Can you state your name?
Kimberly Hickman.
Thank you. All right, other comments from the public? All right, we'll go to the board. Trustee Marks.
Thank you. This was really good to hear your data and what's happening and how it's helping our students and our staff as well. That's really awesome. I wanted to ask, are we tracking the absenteeism and how this, and if this is helping affect the chronic absenteeism?
So at this point, we've been tracking exit surveys, how the, how the parents are feeling and stuff like that, but that's something we could definitely look into.
Yeah, 'cause I wanted to see if it's, because I know that's been, trust is a really big issue. And when I made phone calls for the Parents Leading Change and we were trying, we were trying to get in touch with parents about what, to help find out what was happening and why their students were missing and not attending as often as they needed to be there. It was very difficult because you have to build trust in that moment on the phone, and it's very hard to call and cold-call and do that. So if we've built a relationship with these families already, then it helps to even build on that and then find out what the issue is so that we can see if there's a way to address it. Because I know on the SAB board, we used to do that. We'd sit around a table with 10 people and try to find out why is a student missing school? And then, what can we do to help them get back in school or attend more? Sometimes it was they need an alarm clock, you know? They, their parent was sleeping in, and they just need an alarm clock. So some things were simple, didn't know, you know? But to track it would be helpful. So I just wanted to know, I know you addressed, you've mentioned it, and I was like, "Oh, I really want to know that." So, thank you.
Trustee Daly.
Okay, I have a few questions. Do we know, on, on page four, on the data of student assistance specialists, do we know what is helping with the decrease in crisis intakes?
Specifically, I, I won't say that. I think it would attest to the amount of individual one-on-one services that have been provided. I would say there's a correlation of our ability to be proactive to provide services, not only by our clinicians, but by our student assistance specialists to ensure they're getting services when they need them.
I would also like to see the crisis breakdown per elementary, middle school, or junior high, high school, if possible. That would be nice to kind of see, because then that way, we could indicate, are there areas, like if every high school right now has one, is that where the majority of the crisis intakes happen? And then, is that the reason, now that every high school has one? I do have some concerns in reference to the number of students served. The number of students served are approximately 11% of the population, while typically 20% of the population struggles with mental health conditions. So we are, we are missing something somewhere, and it may be that we're seeing it more as malicious rather than necessarily behavioral health. Do we know, I'm sorry. I see you're still writing, so I'm gonna pause with my question. This one's gonna be a little bit harder. So on page five, with the data for families served, do we know how many families? How many different family entities that we have? We know approximately 30,000 students, but do we know?
Right there, we've served this past year 494 families, specific families.
Right, but do we know the, the number of actual families in order to see the data and how much we're serving? Because the family contacts is the, is multiple contacts with the same family. I think I asked this question last year, too. So on, on seven, with the data on services provided by race and ethnicity, can we also get that breakdown of the clinicians?
A breakdown of the clinicians.
Ethnicity.
The providers.
The providers, yes. Whether they're the SASs, FSSs, or the clinicians themselves. And then, last year, there was, as with teachers, difficulty in finding and hiring. So are we running into the same problem? Are we gonna be able to staff through Center for Human Services appropriately?
Yeah, as noted before, we, we were pretty much fully staffed at this point in the year with just, you know, this time of the year, people are, you know, kind, there's some, some attrition because of, you know, getting counseling positions or other things, but we are as close to fully staffed than we ever been in any of the years. So we're, it's very promising. With note that there are people looking for promotions as they finish their masters, and that will, that will be our challenge this year as these, as, as some of our student assistance specialists and family supports finish, finish their, their masters program. They are looking for that next step, whether it's being a clinician, a school psychologist, a counselor, and so on.
Okay. And then, with the move of the consent agenda item, D6 to B4, can I ask a question about that? Or is?
Let's, you have to save it for that one.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other one is on special, is specifically for special ed. So if you have a special ed question, yeah. All right, Trustee Irvin.
Yes, questions? Actually, the ethnicity one was already asked by Trustee Daly. That's one of mine. And the other was the, the ratio, the student to, to clinician ratio on each, on each campus, FAS and SAS, was the student-to-staff ratio in terms of access, you know, being.
Case load?
Case load.
Yeah.
Like on our campus, we know the student-to-staff ratio of all our counselors, you know? And basically, the, the same thing was this student.
I would say a clinician, on average, has to be right around mid-20s on their caseload at a time. It's hard to do a ratio because we don't know how long each student will last in treatment. They, they're able to attend as their treatment goals are being met, so it could be a very short duration of treatment, or it could be a little bit longer. I, I know we had a little bit of a waitlist, but it wasn't very extensive this year. We were actually able to get pretty much everyone in.
Can you state your name and who you are for record?
Hello, I'm Steve Collins. I'm the Behavioral Health Director at the Center for Human Services. So we do the mental health clinicians.
Okay. Also...
Oh, how? How often do, so do clinicians pull students out of classrooms, SAS? How frequently is that when they're under?
Typically, they work with the site to make sure we don't, we pull them at a time that's not crucial to instructional core or direct instructions that are taking place, but usually it's once a week over an eight-week period on average.
Okay. And we're monitoring that, making sure we're not impacting on that instructional time.
And then there is an opportunity for them not only to be pulled during the school day, but after school, too, as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Vice President Mejia.
Yes, my question, I mean, thank you first of all, thank you for the report. I like, and I like some of the questions that have been asked before. On page seven, I know the services we provide, and I'm just thinking, I don't know if people are paying attention to some of the volatility that's happened around rates in California and all that, and I think kids more than ever are experiencing that or seeing that. And so I just want to, you know, put it on Center for Human Services, you know, maybe if your clinicians don't have as much training on that forefront to kind of get geared up for that, because it's happening, and it's, the anxiety is going to be there for, you know, for our children, especially mixed status families, you know, folks with, I mean, mixed status families, that's an impact. So I just want to put it out there as a, it might potentially be an increase in that arena, just because if I'm seeing it on social media, it's everywhere, and it's been, it's having an impact, because kids are seeing it every day, and I don't know, I'm just, that's the area where I'm not saying to the specific direction, but I know there's some potential local partners that could also help with some additional training and stuff for the clinicians to have a little bit more depth in terms of that as well, and that forefront. So I'm happy to also introduce some of the folks I know on that front as well, to foster those relationships. Thank you.
All right, trustee Lopez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lameli, for the report. Bear with me, because I was looking at, I wanted to see if there's any data point around what is the average per student, the average amount of touch points slash service, services or sessions per student that we service. I know, looking at the one on the student assistance specialist data, if I'm thinking correctly, 17,000 sessions plus 498 sessions put together divided by the amount of students that we serve, gives about roughly a 5.24, but I know that included here's probably other factors. So do you guys have that, that data around, on average, how many, if we take the average student that come through our, through the services, how many times have we interacted with them, either in group sessions, individual sessions, or family contacts?
For the family support part, we do mention the family contacts. For student assistance specialists, they can be seen up to eight sessions.
Okay.
Now, that may not include a check-in, check-out, a two-minute session, but actual sessions that take place. So for that number, you may see some that you only need three or four sessions to exit out and be ready to move forward, but it's up to eight sessions. So that average reflects that. So you'll see that difference in that correlation.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, trustee Brown.
I want to thank you all for this report and for the good information that you've shared with us. As I look at the numbers and the trends that we're seeing over the past three years, it appears that we're increasing the support that we're able to receive for our students, and I think that's phenomenal. I'm concerned, however, as we look at all programs and services and threats of cuts from the federal government, are we seeing cuts in any of the programs and services that are provided by Center for Human Services?
I think for...
When the most recent cuts that I believe have been removed, there would have been a small adjustment to the federal dollars that are used at the junior high level specifically. However, since that time, there's no concern in terms of our ability to backfill that, so at this time, no reductions at all.
We'll hold our breath and hope that continues.
Yes.
All right, trustee Irvin, did you have something else?
Yes, I missed one of my questions. What does the parent trainings look like? What do they tell?
I can take a stab at it. They've done parent trainings on issues like identification, early onset of mental health issues. They will, they've conducted forums at a number of our school sites, including our community schools, regarding topics germane to mental health, depression, anxiety, et cetera.
Okay, I'm just making sure we weren't offending parents and saying, "I'm going to train you to be a parent," because that's how I took it. I didn't want to open that kind of words. Thank you, thank you for the report, too.
All right, thank you so much for this report. I do have a couple of questions, many of them were asked already. So on our survey comments, one of the things that I've been diving into the last few years is the idea of qualitative data and empathy interviews. I don't know if there were a lot of instances on the surveys to give, for students to give qualitative feedback in terms of, or feedback or comments, in terms of sentences or just discussion. We have an opportunity now with AI to be able to take a lot of data that's qualitative and summarize it very quickly, and I've been doing that with a couple of things that I've been working on, and it's quite amazing. So I would love, excuse me, I would love to see some trends of how students are feeling in terms of their support, from their thoughts, rather than just, you know, 87% said they reported they benefited from the assistance program, right? Like, those are some pretty good quantitative data, but what comes from the mouths of our student and the thoughts in their hearts? I think we can access those data better now than we've been able to in the past. So that's just more of maybe a recommendation as we move forward for data. I wonder how these data have affected or connect to or have any association with our suspension rates, our graduation rates, incidence of violence and fights, and all of those issues that I think connect with mental health? I'm of the belief that most, if not all, acts of defiance and of misbehavior is, has a mental health aspect to it, there's something going on for a child, so I just wonder if we see a decline in that.
You will see at our, kind of our summary, or actually, I believe it's a board meeting in September, I'm very, very proud of the suspension rates, that elementary has always been low, I think that stayed the same junior high and high school, another sharp decrease in our overall suspension rates, which is positive. Despite some events that occurred last year, our overall district attendance is up, despite the fact that, yes, there were some, some events that occurred last year that caused some significant decreases in attendance, so very, very pleased with the fact that we still showed overall growth last year.
Excellent. And this is just a little anecdotal, I was on a podcast I was recording, I had a guest on today, and we were talking about math education, but his experience growing up and feeling that he was in a system that didn't welcome him, that it wasn't, he didn't belong. And when he was working in school, he spent so much time in his mind thinking about, "Am I doing this, and what's my presentation look like to everyone else?" So that everyone else thought that they would belong in a place that he felt he didn't belong, or accepted him, accepted him as the person who he was. And all of that energy was going to that, and until he can clear his mind of that, it was hard to focus on solving the problem in front of him. That's why mental health services like this are so important, is to help students clear their minds to be better students. Went to a presentation called Maslow Before Bloom. If they don't have, they don't have their necessities first, there's nothing that I could do as a teacher instructionally that'll get them to learn the things that they need to learn. So I appreciate the supports that we give our students to help them become better students as, and be better people and know themselves. So I thank you for your work with our kids, thank you for this report. I look forward to next year's report, seeing how things go as we continue on this. So this is a, this was not only a report, but I believe this was a ratification of an agreement with the Center for Human Services. So we do need an approval and a motion, so do I hear a motion to approve the ratification of our 25-26 services agreement with the Center for Human Services?
I motion.
Okay, I hear a motion by trustee Daly, a second by Vice President Mejia. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, wait, yes.
I was just going to ask if trustee Daly did not have a question on the...
That's separate.
It's a different one, yeah.
Got it, okay, sounds good.
Okay, so all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously, which will move us to B4A, which is the approval of the Modesto City Schools' SELPA services agreement for social emotional behavior interventions with Center for Human Services for the 25-26 school year. So this is just slightly different because it focuses on our agreement with the Center for Human Services as it pertains to their, their services for our SELPA. Do you want to say anything on that before we get any?
For probably about the last decade, and it was really when we bifurcated the amount of services that we provide to our students without disabilities, that increased. The services that are referenced on the consent agenda are specific, governed by an IEP team decision for an individual child, two different, related in a way, but different in terms of what they do, the reasons behind it, et cetera. So it is two separate agreements.
All right, thank you. Trustee Brown, any comments from the public? All right, any questions from the board? Trustee Brown?
I just wanted to explain why I requested that this be pulled for a separate vote. In my mind, the fact that we were receiving a report from the Center for Human Services, it would be somewhat irresponsible for us to vote on a contract before hearing that report. And so not in any way a suggestion that I don't support the measure as it's presented tonight.
All right, trustee Daly.
My question is really, I must not have noticed this in the consent agenda before, so what would be the difference in these services besides their students in the special needs or special education department? What would be the difference?
Students with disabilities are entitled to a service called educationally-related mental health services, or better known as ERMs, and that has specific criteria and specific assessments that take place to determine that eligibility. The services that we provide on the general education side of the House don't have that same level of criteria and assessment needed to qualify.
What program is utilized at Center for Human Services to?
Combination of psych, like a psychologist, a school psychologist would do a special education evaluation, that would help determine and govern whether or not a child potentially would need educationally-related mental health services.
Right, but then, then where, that's our side, what side, what department in Center for, at Center for Human Services would be this department?
They have a special education side of CHS that works specifically for special education behavioral interventions, and then those ERM services. We provide specific training to those individuals to ensure that we all collectively comply with what a child needs for their IEP.
How many special ed students do we have that Center for Human Services serves?
We have about 3,800 in the SELPA. I would have to do a breakdown of the students with ERMs. I don't have that number, I could put it in a communication.
Okay, and then how many, how many providers? Would they be clinicians? How many providers does Center for Human Services provide for that?
Eight specific to our students with disabilities.
And you said how many besides the ERMs?
Eight clinicians, and then for special education behavioral interventionists, I believe we have five.
Right, but how many students?
I don't have the number in terms of how many they served last year. I know that we kept all eight of the clinicians very busy, and I believe we kept the special education behavioral intervention, providers busy as well.
And the education difference between the two?
I would say comparable on the clinical end, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and bachelor's level on the behavioral intervention.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve Modesto City Schools' SELPA services agreement for social emotional behavior interventions with the Center for Human Services for 25-26 school year? I hear a motion from trustee Brown, second from Vice President Mejia. All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. That'll move us on to our next report, which is our report from trustee Irvin on the 2025 California Association of Black School Educators Conference.
Yes, had a very good time at the conference, learned a lot. The district actually received an award at the, at the conference, the Edge You Excellence Award for the work that we have been, you know, the amazing work we have been doing in improving the lives of our, you know, African-American students in particular, in the neighborhoods of, you know, suspensions, expulsions, graduation rates, you name it. We, you know, recognize still we have some work to do, but we have made some amazing progress, and so that's why we were, we were recognized. And so it was a very humbling experience that we received that award. Some of the, so when I was there, I wanted to be targeted in my workshops, and I went to the reading ones, and, you know, as they pertain to African-American students and statewide, what, you know, school districts are doing in order to bring, you know, equity in that, that area. But more importantly for me, I went to two of the workshops that were for math, and one of them had a very excellent workshops of how they were helping school districts, school districts in Long Beach, Rialto, and there's one other district that had specific programs that they were doing that the data showed they were helping those students in math. And two of the school districts were majority African-American, the schools that they were targeting. The other, third one, was a combination of both Latino students and African-American students, and they were seeing some really tremendous growth. And so I actually, the, I forget his doctor, someone, but he was working with those districts, and I, you know, I told him I would go back to my district, because I would like to see some PD around the strategies that they were using to get those, to get those gains, particularly with the math. And the reading workshops were, they were doing very similar things that we were doing in our district in terms of addressing those, addressing reading, but the math was the one that really moved me. And another one was the workshop that Colin Kaepernick did at the, at the conference, and he has an educational AI company. And they did some amazing things back east, because he's, and I had a long conversation with him, especially since I, I worked with the 49ers for three seasons back when he was, back when he was a quarterback, because I kind of reminded him of that. I'm the one that designed their alumni mentor, mentoring program, and provided the training for the alumni from the 49ers that they were bringing back to mentor their first year and... and provided the training for the alumni from the 49ers that they were bringing back to mentor their first year and second year student, uh, second year players. And so, but back then, he wasn't a first or second year player. But it was, but I reminded him, and he remembered, okay, that program. So, creatively, they're doing, he was working with some schools in Newark, New Jersey around using AI to be creative with art, music. Some of the music that these kids produced was amazing. And, and I asked him, I said, "Well, you know, your parents live in Modesto, and you, you know, you grew up and went to school in Turlock. You know, can't you come back and, you know, see if that could be a, a program that, you know, we could use in our area?" And he said, "You're right. You know, I could. You know, I can, you know, definitely come back and make a presentation, you know, and, and see what..." But like I said, he's working with schools in New York and in New Jersey because that's where he resides right now. So, so that was interesting as well. And it's just interesting to see that the, a lot of the things that CAPSY is doing, they got school districts from all over the country coming and sharing ideas and programs and data. And, and so, it was just really good to be able to attend those, those workshops to be able to see if we can bring some of that knowledge here in our district to address the same issues that other districts are having throughout the country. So, we think math is a, is an issue here with our African-American student, but it's an issue across the country. And so, you know, so I'm looking forward to really, you know, diving deeper into that. Also, I got some research that they had given, you know, shared with me, email that I'd like to share as well, especially with you, President Meestis, since you are a mathematician, to really to see what that data is looking like and those strategies that, from a research standpoint, that may be able to lead, lend credence to helping us to improve and increase our, our math and reading, and particularly amongst our African-American population. And that's about, that's about it.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that report. Do we have any comments from the public on this agenda item? All right. Any from the board? Comments or questions? Trustee Marks?
Let me just make a short comment. I just appreciated going last year. It was my first year in, let's see. Oh, Mackay?
Yes.
Mackay called me out. He said, "Hey, I wanted you to come," and he got you anyway. Because he'd been asking me to come for quite a few years, and so it was really great to attend. But I agree with you. There's so much great information that we could use here. And I loved just being a part of, just of that conference. It's, it was very well attended, and the fact that we got to talk with other board members from around the nation. They come all the way out to California to come to this conference. And so, and it's very, it was a large conference. I was impressed. And so, I hope I can attend in the future.
Yes, it was. It actually sold out, you know, in terms of, yes. So, yeah, it was very, very well attended, and like I said, the information is great. Thank you.
Where was the conference?
This bad place called Napa.
Oh, okay. That's right. Napa. I remember. That's where they normally have it. Was that, was that presenter Dr. Christopher Childs by any chance? Does that sound familiar?
His name, that sounds familiar.
Dr. Christopher Childs?
Yes.
Yeah. He's one of the leading math educators and in leading mathematics education for black students. Great. Well, thank you for that report. Very interested in, in talking to you about what you learned about that math, in the math conference, sorry, in the sessions about mathematics. All right. Which will move us on to our next agenda item, the public notice to approve submission of provisional internship permits to the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing. I think, uh, that's a long, long one. I think this is all the Mike Henderson Show now. To you, Mike. Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, Board President Meestis and Trustees, Dr. Patrongo and Cabinet Members. I was feeling a little bit down being at the end of the agenda all the time. The crowd's gone. Credentialing items are important. But then I was searching for words. I looked at how many agenda items I have that is the person who speaks the most and is the last speaker of the program, and I think they call it keynote. So...
To be fair, I think most of the audience is still here.
All right. Well, I just had to lift my own spirits there. So, away we go. On some important credentialing items as we approach the beginning of the year, trying to get all those folks in, in place and ready to start the year for when our students arrive. Item B6 serves as public notice to approve the submission provisional internship permits, otherwise known as PIPs, to the Commission for Teacher Credentialing. The district makes every effort to hire candidates who are fully credentialed. However, in some cases, due to the need and teacher shortages, we do hire individuals who are in the process of completing requirements and working towards securing their preliminary credentials. This can be a function of the need for high demand, low supply, or highly specialized positions, or the timing of vacancies, and other factors. In this case, the PIP applies to two employees for the multiple subject authorization, one employee for single subject authorization, and five employees for education specialist authorization. These employees are in the process of completing requirements for their respective authorizations. And upon approval, this permit authorizes the employees in their respective assignments while they continue to complete their credentialing requirements. With that, we do recommend the board approve the item.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments or questions from the board? I have one question. The single subject can, may I ask which subject that single subject is in?
Looks to be dance.
Dance. Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve this agenda? Okay. So, I hear a motion by Vice President Mejia, second by Trustee Marks. All those in favor to approve the submission for provisional internship permits to the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing as proposed by Mr. Henderson, state aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. All right. Next one.
Thank you. Item B7 is a waiver request related to the credentialing requirement for certificated instructors as required by the commission. In this case, it applies to 12 teachers, eleven of whom are CTE teachers, one of whom is an out-of-state teacher moving our way to California and in the transition process of credentialing. These folks are proficient in their respective industry practices, or in the case of the out-of-state and their content area. But we, they have not yet completed their formal pedagogical training in instructing English learners. Upon approval, this waiver covers the requirement while they complete coursework as part of the process of clearing their respective credentials. And we recommend also that the board approve this item.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this gen item? All right. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I have a motion? Do I hear a motion to approve this item? I hear a motion by Trustee Marks, second by Vice President Mejia. All those in favor to approve the variable waiver request to the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing under California Education Code 44253.3, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next one. Mr. Anderson.
Okay. Item B8 recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the assignment of a teacher, in this case, outside of his credentialed academic major or minor. Most often, we present the resolution for a certificated staff who are credentialed in one area and allow, it allows them to teach an elective outside of the core academic classes, including the interscholastic athletics period for which students receive PE credit. In this case, it is for the purpose of authorizing teaching in the interscholastic athletics assignment. It's been determined that the individual listed qualifies under the authorization granted through this resolution, and we recommend the board approve this item.
All right. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments or questions from the board? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve this resolution? All right. I hear a move by Trustee Daly and seconded by Trustee Marks. All those in favor to approve 25, Resolution 2526-2, authorizing assignment of teacher credentialed outside of credential area in accordance with Education Code 44258.7 for the 2526 school year, state by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Next one.
Thank you. Item B9 is a credentialing item as required by the commission, specifically requesting approval to authorize the assignment of one certificated employee in the area of speech-language pathology. The individual holds a speech-language pathology license and degree and provides services consistent with their licensing. However, the approval is needed to authorize the services in the assignment in lieu of a CTC issued credential. Basically, if they have that license and degree, a, a CTC credential, formal credential in that respect is not required for the services they're providing. So, it's covered. This person has been through the board before, and as a continuation, we have to bring it back each year. And we recommend the board approve the item.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments or questions from the board? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve Resolution Number 2526-3, authorizing assignment of licensed certificated personnel in accordance with ED Code 44831 for the 2526 school year? Moved by Trustee Daly, second by Trustee Irvin, or was it Lopez? It was Irvin. Okay. Trustee Irvin? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Next up.
Thank you. Item B10 recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the assignment of teachers outside of their credentialed academic major or minor. We present this resolution for certificated staff who are credentialed in one area, but assigned to a, a course in an area for which they're not credentialed. In this case, it addresses four instances of teachers credentialed in math or science to teach a different specialized course for which they have sufficient units on their transcripts to qualify them for the assignments. I think four IB program actually is how that worked out, the courses that they'll be teaching. It's been determined that these individuals qualify under the authorization granted through this resolution, and we recommend the board approve the item.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public? Any from the board? Do I hear a motion to approve Resolution Number 252604, authorizing assignment of teachers outside of credential area in accordance with ED Code 44263, 44256, and 44258.2 for the 2526 school year? I heard a motion from Trustee Irvin and a second by Vice President Mejia. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Oh, do you have a comment before we vote?
No, I had a comment, but I was gonna, because I missed the comment, that I wanted to, nothing to do with the, the item, but think that the cabinet, our, our district was well represented at CAPSY. And so, we received that award, Ed U Excellence Award, because of the teamwork of our team within our district. So, I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out, because I didn't earlier, because I was looking at the clock for a bathroom break. So, so I wanted to make sure I got that out. It's teamwork. And, and CAPSY folks recognize that. You know, recognize our, our presence there and our passion for education. That's all.
All right. Thank you. The, the motion did carry unanimously, by the way. So, the motion was carried before you made your comment, which was okay.
And last but not least,
Last one.
Item B11, the approval of the revised High School District's Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators for 2526. You may recall in May, we brought our declarations of need for elementary and high school. We, we just wanted to be extra cautious and make sure we covered them all. We were looking at the numbers, and if we hired one more in a certain area, then we would have met the number that we put on that declaration. We would have to come back again. It could tie up somebody, somebody's timing of, of starting. So, this, this extended that number and revised the, the number for the English learner authorization. So, Item B11 seeks the board's approval of the revised Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators for 2526 for the high school. It's an annual declaration submitted to the CTC for which we submit and receive board approval. The credential, excuse me, the requirements for the approval to be part of the public discussion action items. And in short, it notifies the CTC of our need for fully qualified credentialed educators in respective areas, and the approval allows the district to seek temporary or emergency permits with the county office in cases where fully credentialed or authorized candidates could not be secured. So, as I mentioned, the board approved the original declaration for the high school in May. The current item is a revision of the high school declaration based on a revised assessment of our anticipated needs for the school year. So, with that, we recommend approval.
Any comments from the public? Trustee Brown?
Mike, I just wanted to say thank you to you and your department for making sure that we have the right people in the right place and opportunities for all our students for every course. You know, this, we make fun of, of the routine-ness of this effort, but I can see what's behind it. And and my phone says thank you too.
Yeah, I just want to echo that. This is, it's routine stuff, but it's super important because we need to get our, we need to get teachers. We need to have teachers. We need to have staff ready to go for our kids. And this last one, this is just letting the CTC know that, hey, we do our best, but we have openings that we need to fill, and we're going to try to find the best people we can, even though they don't have the specific credential that we need. So, I, I appreciate all the work that you do, your, your group does, to get us the teachers that we need. Yes.
My fault, but another thing that this does is that it expresses confidence in those people who are in those positions and provides them a way to meet the ED Code requirements for the positions that they're actually in. So, it builds within the organization and helps us get the right people to the point where they can be recognized for the positions they're in.
The HR staff, I'll definitely share the sentiments with them. They are working hard right now to, you know, get everybody in place and clear for the start of the year. So, I appreciate it.
Yeah. And one last thing, I know, I know where you guys are all like, "Let's go." Just, just because somebody is, is not, doesn't have the credential for one thing, or is an intern, does not make them not prepared, or any less of a teacher, right? I was an intern like my first year. I didn't have my full credential yet, and I was able to teach in a high school. And here I am, twenty-six years later in education. And then, my wife also didn't finish her TPAs, but was still hired to, to, to teach and finish her TPAs during that year, and now is fully credentialed. So, these are the things we need to make sure we get good teachers in our, our districts. All right. Okay. So, let me finish the whole thing. Do I hear a motion to approve the revised High School District's Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators for 2526 school year? I hear a motion by Trustee Brown. I hear a second by Trustee Daly. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any items to be placed on future board agendas? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Hear a motion from Vice President Mejia, second by Trustee Marks. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. The meeting is adjourned.